Thank you, Board, for doing that.
Good evening. I'd like to call the August 14th, 2023 meeting of the Dare County Board of Education Order. We're in meeting at the Dare County Administration Building in the Manio, and the time is now 5:14 PM. Before we begin, I'd like to request a moment of silence. Thank you. I'd like to recognize any Board of Commissioners that might be here today. I don't see any. Thank you. And now I'd like for you to join me in the Pledge of Legions. If you please stand.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, with the word of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First order of business this evening is approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda.
I have a motion to approve of Mr. Woody. Is there second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Brower. Is there any discussion? Here and now, a call for a vote. All in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda's been approved. Next, we'll move to public comment, and I'll turn the meeting over to our Board Attorney, Ms. Rachel Hitch.
Do we have public comment? We have no public comment this evening, so I won't need to do anything with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hitch. Next, I'd like to open the floor for announcements. Mr. Bassnight.
Jared, we've got several things listed under items for information and reports that deal with our enhancements for our new schools.
Sorry. We've got several things in your packet under reports and items for information that deal with open houses and school start times and dismissal times, and if it pleased the Board, I'll wait till then to discuss those.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Blackstone. Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the ascent agenda as presented?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the ascent agenda or consent agenda.
I have a motion by Mr. Brower. Is there a second? For the second by Ms. Mothwell. Any discussion? Hearing now a call for a vote. Those in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. The next item on the agenda is reports and items for information, and I'll turn the meeting back over to Mr. Bassnight.
Thank you, sir. The first item we want to talk about this evening is a camp that was held this summer. It's the first time we've done this in Dare County Schools, and it looked like a fantastic event. And so we had our own Hannah Nash, who's our Public Information Officer, along with Current TV and Mr. Benny Baldwin, who has this video running right now, I believe, on Current TV, and it is an outstanding video that covers our summer camp and or the mini camp, and we're going to share it with you.
Here at Mags Elementary School, we are entering our sixth year with the dual-language immersion program. So our fifth-grade students are now transitioning into sixth grade, which is very exciting. But we were very fortunate to host a DLI mini camp this summer, and it's such a wonderful experience for our children that are learning to speak Spanish.
Mi nombre es Sevi. Yo tengo nueve años. I just said, my name is Sevi, and I'm nine years old.
It's an opportunity for them to come in, have some fun, be immersed in the language, practice their skills, keep them fresh and ready to go for the upcoming school year. So we're super excited about this opportunity.
It is very educational, but yeah, it's really fun. It's just like to regroup of whatever we've learned.
So this is our second summer for having DLI mini camp at Cape Hatteras Elementary. Of course, we love it because we're helping our kids stay immersed through the summer, but bigger than that, Hatteras Island is a little bit isolated, as many of you know. So we are bringing the world to us. We have teachers from Costa Rica, Guatemala, Venezuela, Nicaragua, and we love that they come and not only bring their language, but also bring their culture and immerse our children in things that they have never experienced. That is one of the greatest benefits of DLI mini camp.
We are fostering and promoting global awareness in our students and in our families, also in our community.
Spanish is one of the most spoken languages in the world. So what we can do and offer our kids in here is that they can communicate with different people around the world, or maybe if they want to have different opportunities, you know, they want to travel around the world, they can get different jobs.
Yeah, it's good to have a refresher in the summer because sometimes over the summer, you can forget some of them.
So what we want to do is give them extra help and support with developing certain skills in Spanish, especially considering that this is a group of kids that are between the ages of seven and nine. They're within the first years of their school. So the fact that they come here to do different activities, it helps them a lot build vocabulary or even reinforce the vocabulary that they already know. So we want to give this opportunity to kids during the summer so that they can reinforce those skills, especially because Spanish is an added language that they get to practice at home a lot or even in the community. So it gives them that extra help to be ready for the next school year. I think that's the added value that they have.
I think it's probably a 10 out of 10.
We want to congratulate our own Ms. Maura Newton, who's working with our DLI program, and as well as our partners Participate Learning for the work that they're doing. This is our first big turnover where we had a group of DLI teachers leaving and a new group coming in, and they've been preparing those teachers, and we celebrated them coming in on the buses and getting off at Central Office and getting them in their classrooms, and everybody's all excited about getting this school year started. So just wanted to give them a shout out. Second thing we've got on Items for Information is Attachment Two in your packets, and that's the open house schedule of events for this, for the start of school. Most of those dates being August 24th, 22nd, and 23rd at Manio Middle. And you see the times beside each one of these. These are posted on our website, and anyone that, any parents that need access or want to know where these are can just go to our district website and have all these dates posted for them. Please, Board, feel free. If you get an opportunity to stop by those, any of those events, I know they would greatly appreciate having y'all in the buildings for kickoff. The next attachment is Attachment Three in your packets, and Attachment Three consists of when our doors open at each of our campuses. Some of those times have changed as far as the doors opening and the start times by a matter of minutes and trying to balance out the amount of traffic in and around certain areas of our campuses. So you've got the doors open, tardy bells, regular dismissal time, and any early dismissal times. And again, that's on Attachment Three in your packets. The next item on Items for Report is our new pre-K program at Kitty Hawk Elementary School. And our Director of Elementary Education is going to come up and talk to you a little bit about our new, and I know she's completely excited about this, so.
All right, can you hear me now?
There you go.
Just to be fair, I did not know I was going to be saying anything. I knew, but I was like, hmm. So welcome, everyone. It's so nice to be in front of you all. We are super excited to announce that we officially have a pre-K program at all five of our elementary schools, so it's way overdue. We, it was a long process with a lot of hoops to jump through, so we are excited to be able to announce that. We are in a temporary licensure state right now, and once we get through January, we're going to have a few inspections and visits between now and then. We will secure official licensure. So we are very excited. It's going to be great for the Kitty Hawk community. We have a full class there, and we have a great teacher that we have moved over there as well. So we are super excited, and I hope y'all are just as excited as we are, and I'm welcome to answer any questions that y'all have. All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, ma'am. That's the calmest. I've seen her talking about that, just so you know. Next item on the agenda is an update on our early college application to Department of Public Instruction, and our Director of Secondary Education, Ms. Denise Fallon, is going to come forward and talk to us about our timeline.
Thank you. Good evening. So if you look on the screen. We've checked off the things from the timeline that we've already done. If you see on June 29th, we did have an orientation with the people from the Department of Public Instruction that kind of went through the process. Mr. Bassnight and I were there on a virtual call. We were really excited when the call was over about the support that they were going to provide. So you can kind of see where we're going. If we'll go on to the next slide. Excited me about the support from the BPI is that you can submit the application, and they'll review it with feedback before the official submission. So I think that's a really good thing. Anybody have any questions for me? Okay, it's kind of where we are. Yeah, I'm excited too. Yay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Last item under Reports and Information is a donation from the First Flight High School Athletic Boosters Club at the football stadium, and Mr. Ian Adams, our Director of Maintenance, is going to come forward and talk to you a little bit about that.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Board. It's pretty simple. That's about what it is. The Athletics Boosters called me a couple of weeks ago wanting to donate a new sign for out front of the stadium. We have plywood and four-by-fours out there, and they wanted to put up a brick and mortar with pin signs in it. So it's highly visible. Just wanted you guys to know that boosters are stepping up and making it much prettier out there.
How much is the donation for?
They didn't value it, but I valued it about $3,500, just material. And it's leftover. They've been working on it on the weekends. Support the footers this past weekend. Thank you, Ian. Yep, absolutely.
And Board, by your policy, you're required to receive donate, notification of any donation for you to accept over $5,000. So this was under five, so we're just notifying the Board that this is taking place, in case anybody has any questions. And, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have for Reports and Information.
Thank you, Mr. Bassnight. Well, now to move to unfinished business. I'll turn the floor over to Board Attorney Rachel Hitch for presenting the second reading of policy manual updates presented at the June Board Meeting.
Sure, thank you. The, we recommend some policy updates, Policy 1610 and 7800. Those are recommended updates from the School Board Association based on a change in statute. Policy 3101 is dual enrollment. There were some updates recommended from the School Board Association based on a change in state policy. And you're required to comply with the statute by December 2023, but we wanted to make sure we got you up to date as soon as possible. There's a policy 42, 4023 and 7233. They're the same policy about pregnant and parenting students. That's recommended from the School Boards Association based on some new legislation. Policy 4310 also recommended from the School Board Association. That's intended to address the use of Chat GPT for school assignments. And then the last is a new policy that's recommended on automated phone and text messaging that has to do with when we're communicating with parents whose numbers we have and things like that.
Did we never have a policy on that?
This is a brand-new policy for you all. It's kind of the robocall thing, and parents sometimes This is a brand new policy for you all. It, it's kind of the robocall thing and parents sometimes get. So there's been a push at the state level to try to, to notify parents when they're going to receive those messages. And that's what I have for the second readings.
Thank you, Ms. Hitch. There's a motion to adopt the proposed policy manual update as presented.
I move we approve the policy proposals as.
Presented. As presented. I have a motion by Mr. Wicker. Is there a second? I'll second. I have a second by Mr. Woody. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. We'll now move to new business. I'll turn the meeting back over to Board Attorney Rachel Hitch for presenting the first reading of proposed policy manual update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We are recommending a policy revision. This will be the first reading, so we don't need any action, just for you to, to read it on first reading for 4,700 student records. And this has been updated with some proposed revisions, some that came recommended from the School Board Association, some that came recommended from us and some that were part of, in discussion with your administration. That's all I have for second.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hitch. For the next item under new business, we'll hear from Mr. Bassnight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board members. This is a first reading of the memorandum of understanding between Dare County Schools and the Dare Education Foundation that has been requested. This is attachment six in your packet. Mr. Chairman, you can waive first reading on this and vote on this if you choose to this evening.
Is there a motion to waive the first one, Rachel, or just?
I'll make a motion. We waive the first reading.
Thank you. You have a motion and a second by Ms. Mothwell. Any discussion? Call for the vote. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, then the motion passes.
That's to waive the first reading?
Well, yeah, to waive the first reading, correct.
I'll make a motion that we approve it as well.
Second.
We have a motion to approve as presented and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Thank you.
Next item, Mr. Chairman, is item C on your agenda. The Dare Education Foundation is requesting that the Board appoint or volunteer a member of the Board to sit on the Run Hill Ridge Construction Committee for the new construction of teacher housing at Run Hill Ridge. And, Mr. Chairman, if you would like to nominate someone to sit on that committee?
And before I do that, I want to thank publicly the county commissioners for the funds that were given to DEF. This is huge for our school district. We'd be able to get anywhere from eight to 12 more units, I believe, for our teachers. So once again, I want to thank, you know, all the county commissioners for their vote of confidence in us. With that, I would recommend Barry Wyker to serve on that board. What's that?
No.
No?
Woody.
That was me. Me for the, the.
He's, he's the board rep.
I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Yes, I'd like to recommend Carl Woody.
And you'll just need a second on that nomination and then.
Okay.
Mr. Woody, do you accept the nomination?
Yes.
Okay. There's a motion to approve, correct?
Did you get a second on the nomination?
Did you get a second on the nomination?
A second.
A second.
I have a second.
Then the Board can vote.
Okay. All in favor, yeah, all in favor of Mr. Woody being on that committee, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Mr. Woody.
Next item, Mr. Chairman, is item D. And that is, as Ms. Fallon just talked about, we're requesting that the Board have a representative from the Board sit on our early college application team committee. So if you would please make a recommendation and have the Board approve one of our Board members to sit on that application team.
Once again, I would recommend Barry Wyker.
I'll second.
I have a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Wicker, do you accept your nomination?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, once again.
What's the right name?
He and I go way back.
Ask Wicker. Mr. Wicker.
That's right.
That's, thanks, sir.
And every time I call him on my cell phone, my cell phone will not take Wicker. I've got to say Wicry or some odd crazy name. I've known the guy for 12 years. And sitting here, I still want to think he's on my cell phone. Yeah, I might have to do that.
Call Barry.
Call Barry.
So you have a nomination and a second of the nomination?
Do I have a motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Mr.
Mr. Chairman, that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. This includes our business portion of the meeting. I'd like to now open the floor for comments from the Board.
Thank you. I'd like to just say that I appreciate all the hard work that's been done over the summer with all of our staff. I've not been to every school, but I've been to a lot throughout the summer, including the Central Office. And you see the dedication and the hard work's been what we call behind the scene, where y'all been up front, the day-to-day routine. But I really want to stand up tonight and recognize First Flight High School staff. They were approximately in two and a half weeks, three weeks, without any condition, air whatsoever. The staff was out in a picnic table with an umbrella with their laptop, performing their daily duties. Those custodians are in there, no windows raised, chemicals going, working to make sure that that school was ready for the, the staff and students coming back. And I assure you, when we go there on a 22nd, it's going to look beautiful because of the dedication and hard work. So if the Board would please stand and give them a praise. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Ballance.
I just want to hope that everybody got to rest a little bit this summer. I know a couple of you didn't leave Central Office very often. And I hope that you get something before school starts, but I know that's not far off. But the teacher and staff dedication to our students is phenomenal. And anybody here is lucky to be in Dare County for the dedication that our communities and our teachers and our parents and everybody has towards making sure our schools are the best they can be. So thank you, and I'm sure you guys are getting ready to look forward to Christmas vacation.
Mr. Barry.
I'm just looking forward to a, to a great school year and hope things, looks like things are going to go well.
Ms. Mothwell.
Yes. Special thanks to Central Office. You guys were awesome all summer. And I know most of you never got your Fridays off, no three-day weekends, but you rock. You were great. And the teachers, I know, are working really, really hard to make this year one of the best it can ever be. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Woody.
There we go. Ditto, everybody, from whatever what they said. But I got to do my little blurb for the tech folks out there, prepping, getting all the computers ready to go clean, getting them ready to issue out to the students for the New Year. So I mean, ditto's to them because that's a lot of hard work because I know, I remember those days.
Thank you, Mr. Brower.
Yeah, I, I had the opportunity to, to serve on the team to interview kids and students, to, to be on the Board, to serve in an advisory capacity. We interviewed 13 kids, I believe, as some really, really impressive candidates. And I'm really looking forward to working with them.
And with that, I'd like to piggyback on everybody with the ditto's. But back in November or December, Mr. Bassnight, I think you and I read the same article in the Nighthawk News regarding students saying they didn't have a voice on the Board. And we looked at each other and kind of said, we need to do something about that. So I think we're all excited to have the students come and be advisors to the Board. I think it's going to be a good addition. Going back to the funds from the county commissioners, everybody on this Board has worked hard over the past year, two years, trying to figure this thing out. And it finally got figured out a little bit. So I want to say kudos to all past Board members for your hard work. It's not easy. It's very, very difficult, the ins and outs of money from the state and local monies. So everybody on this Board, thank you so much for, for working on that. And we're, once again, it's, this was huge for our school district. I'm excited about pre-K at all the schools.
So is Katie.
Yeah, Katie is. You mentioned us, how much you had to go through, so Katie, so I appreciate it. Thank you so much. Anything else from anybody? Do I have a motion to adjourn? You got a motion from this? And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We are now adjourned.